Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Steve Herford. I'm the mayor of the city of West Covina. I'm going to call to order the West Covina City Council meeting of Tuesday, January 18th. We'll start tonight with our invocation, which will be given by Reverend Alexandra Conrad of St. Martha's Episcopal Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance from Council Member Tuohy. Please rise.
Let us pray. Almighty God, send down upon those who hold office in the city of West Covina, Mayor Steve Herford, Mayor Pro Tem Michael Tuohy, Council members Karen Armbrust, Sheri Lane, Shelley Sanderson, the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. We thank you for their willingness to serve and for their tremendous gifts for leadership. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
My pledge of allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Reverend, thank you for coming out. And for those of you that attend regularly, we appreciate our leaders in the community that come and give the invocation. And thank you to you and your church. You do it quite a bit, so we appreciate that. Okay, with that, we'll move on to our roll call tonight.
Mayor Chairman Herford?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Vice Chairman Tuohy?
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Armbrust?
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Lane?
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Sanderson?
Here.
Okay, reporting now of closed session. We did have a closed session tonight. City Attorney?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The record should reflect that the city council and the Community Development Commission convened this evening for the items on closed session, that all members were present with the exception of Councilmember and Commissioner Sanderson. The record should further reflect that prior to recessing to closed session, the items that were listed and posted on the agenda were announced for discussion. And the following is my report. First items under conference with real property negotiators, the property located at the assessor's parcel number, excuse me, 8735-002-018, as posted on the agenda. The redevelopment agency and city council, I'm sorry, the CDC and city council received a briefing on this matter. It should be further noted that Mayor Herford did not participate in as much as it related to a solar panel proposal and that the Councilmember Herford, I'm sorry, Mayor Herford is employed by Southern California Edison. That the balance of the city council that were present received the briefing on this matter. There was no action taken. Direction was provided to staff to reject the proposal and bring it back at a future date. Moving on to item, the next item, pad 880, that all members were present, including Mayor Herford. There was no action on that matter after a briefing provided by agency staff, CDC staff. The next item, which is the property located 1420 South Hill Avenue, that matter was taken off calendar and was not heard this evening. Conference with labor negotiators, the various employee groups as presented were heard by the city council. There was no final action taken with respect to those matters and nothing further to report. Lastly, under one matter of conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, the city council received a briefing on that one matter. There was no final action taken, however, and there's nothing to report. That concludes my closed session report. Mr. Mayor, it's appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, any changes to the agenda tonight?
Mr. Mayor, there's no changes to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to presentations. Okay, if I could have Michelle McNeil, our Community Services Director, please come forward. It's once again that great time of the evening to present our photo contest winner. And Michelle, who coordinates this, does a great job, and we had a pretty good entry this time. Thank you.
Good evening. On behalf of your city council and staff, we'd just like to congratulate our December photography contest winner, Wes Homachi. Is Wes here this evening? Wes, please come forward. Wes is our final contestant. We've been running a photography contest for six months, and the theme during the month of December was circles. And so this was Wes's creative interpretation. Do you want to explain where this was taken?
This was taken, I did a group photo for my friends, my close friends, and this was kind of like a creative test shot to just make sure that my focus was sharp and things of that sort. And I guess the nature of the contest, the topic circles, it's a little bit difficult, but this is my interpretation of circles, and I hope everybody enjoys it.
Thank you, Wes. We really appreciate it. If everyone could give Wes a round of applause. Wes, our mayor, has a certificate for you. And again, on behalf of our city council and community services, thank you again for participating. We had a wonderful six-month creative artistic expression of West Covina residents.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to say, the Homachi family has been in our community for years, and there's Ted and his lovely wife and the kids. I went to school with Gordon. That's not Gordon, is it? Okay. Anyway. No, not you, but the man next to you. I'm sorry. Anyway, the Homachis are a great family in our community, so congratulations once again. Okay, the next item on our agenda, it was pretty exciting this year. Over the holidays, we had a holiday home decorating contest. This is the first time we've done this in West Covina. We actually, council went out, a few of us, and judged the contestants, and I have to say that this is something I hope we continue to do every year. We had some tremendous decorating of homes in the city. And Michelle has an announcement to make about some additional financial reward for some of the homeowners.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, I'd like to call forward Kathy Clark. She's the secretary of the Tenant Foundation, and the Tenant Foundation matched a donation by the Costucci Foundation. Costucci Foundation members are here. That's our mayor, Mr. Steve Herford, and our Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Michael Tuohy. So between the Costucci Foundation and the Tenant Foundation, we were able to raise a significant amount of money to award all of our contestants that participated in our inaugural year. So would you like to say a few words on behalf of Tenant?
Yes, on behalf of the Tenant Foundation, we want to present this check, enforced in Miriam Tenant, to the city of West Covina for the citizens that took time and their effort and finances to beautify these homes so that we could all enjoy them. I'm just pleased that we were able to participate in this. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'd like to just take a few minutes and call forward those that are here from the Home for the Holidays contest. Our first place contestants, if you'd come forward when I call your name, Greg and Mason Aslan, Chris and Shannon Iskada, Dan and Amparo Fuentes, Naomi Paul, Ralph and Susan Rodriguez. Is anyone here from first place? We have certificates to present to all of our first place winners this evening, and each one of you will receive a $200 gift certificate to Target. The purpose of our gift certificates to Target is really to encourage you to shop local. We ask you that in exchange for receiving this great gift from the city of West Covina, the Costucci Foundation and the Tenant Foundation, please spend this money locally. Okay? We want you to, we want you to visit our Target on Azusa and spend this money. It's the least we can ask of you in exchange for this beautiful gift, but we can't underscore how amazing these homes were. This first place level was just in a world of its own. I mean, the hospitality that everybody honored, all of our staff welcoming us into their homes, extending greetings of good holiday cheer, and really just a fantastic display of lights and creativity. It was phenomenal. So to all of our first place winners, thank you so much. I guess we'll do a picture. I'm sorry, we'll do a picture.
Naomi, why don't you stand in front?
Chris, would you mind putting your card in the bag? Each person gets two cards, one in the front and one in the back, okay? I'm sorry, first place winners, please stand so Chris can give you your reward. And while we do that, our second place winners were Christopher Beltran, Arthur and Wendy Flores, again, come forward as I call your name, Victor Grijalva, Aida Nasir, and Victoria Thibodeau. So if you're with us here this evening, this is our second place, and again, just so proud of all the creativity that you showed. It was wonderful. And my recollection, this home right here, didn't you do your display to lights?
Yes.
Okay, so he has this amazing display. Everybody does, really. But he has his display that runs in tandem with music being played on a station that you tune into when you come up to his house, and his house lights up as the music plays. It's really fantastic. So we'll pose for our certificate, I mean, our photo here. Our second place, our second place winners are going home this evening with $100 each, again, to Target, and we ask you to spend locally. So our third place winners are Elsie and Victoria Jarra, Roy and Evelyn Molina, Renee Moreno, Mario Ortiz, and Rebecca Perez. If you're here, could you please come forward? All right, very good. Oh, excellent. Nope? Anyone here?
Sure.
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah. So this is our third place. Again, it was just such a pleasure. So thank you so much for sharing all that holiday cheer and lighting with us. Our third place winners will each go home with a $50 gift certificate to Target.
Next portion of our city council meeting is our oral communications portion. This is where our residents are free to come up and speak on any item on the agenda or that is in the purview of the city council. We allow five minutes per speaker. Our first speaker is Vicki Shalaga.
Good evening, Mayor Herford.
Good evening.
And audience, this is very hard for me.
No problem.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you on the council for the December 7, 2010 meeting of the West Covina City Council, being adjourned in the name of my mother, Maybel Audra Green. The recognition certificate that was sent to me and my brother brought peace to us at this very difficult time in our lives. My mother was a grandlady who came from a hearty stock of women in her family. My grandmother and mother both instilled in me lessons which I have instilled into my daughters about faith in God, helping the community you live in, and most of all, thanking the courageous people that fought for my country and have given their lives for freedom for all of us. I come from a list of six names of relatives that were on the Mayflower, so I come from the kind of stock that this country was built on. I pray that I have lived up to the expectations of my forefathers and especially my grandmother and now my mother to be a better person all around. Thank you again for this recognition for my dear mother, who I am sure is looking down at me with pride. Thank you again.
Thank you. God bless you, Vicki.
Mayor Herford, council members. Before I begin, I would like to say what I have to say tonight is with mixed emotions. I've always been a big supporter of the four members on this council, but as everyone knows, when something bothers me that I feel is an injustice, I have to say something. First, I don't understand why the last council meeting was canceled unless you hoped the firestorm would die down about the way you filled the empty council seat. I feel the firestorm has just begun. I have had residents who I have no idea how they got my phone number, call and ask me what I thought about your decision, and none of their thoughts were positive. I don't know if you remember the old movie, Cole and Luke with Paul Newman. His last words before he died in the movie is, "What we have here is a failure to communicate." Well, that's what we have here, a failure to communicate. You haven't listened to the residents, and if you say you did, then you just didn't care. You let one council member's personal interests outrule what was the right thing to do for our city. Nineteen residents put their names in for the seat, and you only had two names on your minds. I know for sure a few of those residents were a lot more qualified than Karen Armbrust, but you really didn't care what was best for our city, only your self-interests. It was said that Karen Armbrust received just 125 votes less than Roger Hernandez in the 2000 election. If all four members of this council would have gotten together and backed just one person, no matter who that person was, they would have won. The majority of the votes she got were protest votes against Roger Hernandez. A lot of the residents who voted for her didn't even know who she was. They were voting against Roger. Let's don't forget, Roger isn't here anymore. When Karen lost in 2007 elections, she disappeared and has never been seen at any council meetings to show any interest in what happens in our city. The only time she started coming around to the council meeting is when Councilmember Sanderson probably told her to show up so she could be nominated for the empty council seat. And I don't know why you even took applications for the council seat when you already had your minds made up who you were going to pick. The application process was a joke. I know for sure Councilmember Sanderson had her mind already made up before Roger Hernandez even left the council, who she was going to pick to fill the empty seat. She personally told me she was going to pick Karen Armbrust. She also said she didn't care what anyone thought about her decision. Councilmember Sanderson decided her personal interests outruled the best interests of the city and the residents by nominating her very close friend that lives in her South Hills neighborhood to the council instead of looking for the best candidate. Now she has two votes instead of just one. She picked a person who I had never seen at any council meetings in the many years that I've been coming to these meetings. The only time she started coming was the last three meetings before she was nominated to the council, when she knew there was going to be a seat open for the council. From what I understand, Karen hardly showed up for her own commission meetings. She missed so many meetings, she should have been kicked off that commission. That would have never happened because she had Councilmember Sanderson protecting her job. I hope she does a better job showing up at the council meeting. Councilmember Sanderson, please don't insult our intelligence and say you do care what we think and how we feel, and you do listen to us, because you already proved you don't care and you don't listen to what we have to say, and nothing you can say can change that. West Covina residents should remember what this council did to them. They showed complete disrespect for the way we felt or how our council was made up. When the residents voted council member in, I have no problem where they live. Councilmember Armbrust wasn't voted in by the residents. She is just another council member picked who lives in the South Hills area by her South Hills friends. These are the facts, and there's nothing this council can say can change them. Councilmember Sanderson should be glad her seat isn't up this November. The only way to show your disapproval is at the ballot box come November 2011. We have to make sure that everyone that feels this council doesn't care what we think and their self-interests outrule what is best for our city. What you need to do is pick a candidate, support them, and make sure you're registered to vote, then get out and vote. Let's all be heard as one voice.
Thank you. Fred Sykes?
Looks like I got one vote in this audience. Good evening, Mayor Herford.
How do?
Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Tuohy, and Councilmembers Lane, Sanderson, and Armbrust. Good evening to the members of the staff and good evening to the audience. I am Frederick Sykes, a resident of West Covina. I'm going to try and put that situation behind me that Mr. Johnson spoke about. I'm going to try to look forward. And right now, my mind is still on the proliferation of telecom towers. We have other city councils in our neighborhood that are calling for moratoriums on the installation of cellphone towers. But however, our city council seems to interpret the law that their hands are tied and that they can do nothing about the proliferation of cellphone towers. It's unfortunate that West Covina has towers already. They're in our neighborhoods, they're in our parks, and they're in our schools. As a matter of fact, in my neighborhood, we have the tower that's near the, inside the Shadow Park. It's near the tennis courts. That tower needs to be refurbished. It is in 360 degrees view of the front and rear yards of homes, and some of those homes have for sale signs on them. And that is a sad thing for a homeowner who's trying to get the best for their property, and their tower's there, especially this one, in a state of disrepair. We have applications lined up. We have applications at the fire station, at Nogales, and Shadow Oak, and that tower is really not for the community because we don't, the neighbors that I surveyed do not have a problem with cell phones, calls being dropped. So common sense is indicating that it's for walnut, and that city's very reserved about putting towers in their community. And these towers are being done with little consideration for the aesthetics of the city and the value of the property that the residents have worked so hard to try to own. We have little consideration for public school, safety, and for the safety of the public. When it comes to what would happen when these towers are under conditions of a fire, earthquakes, high-wing conditions, these things can fall. And there are histories, there is a history that towers have come down. And most egregious is that the installation of these towers is being done without the expressed will of the residents. Many residents purchased the property, and it was pre telecom tower era. It was before this proliferation of cellphone towers. It was not something that we brought our property with, we didn't have that in mind. And we need mitigation. We need mitigation for the eye and ear pollution that is caused by these towers. We need the moratorium for a time for the scientists and engineers to study so that they can give a report on the highest level of development regarding these towers, so we can get a report on how many we need and where the towers need to be located in order for us to have quality wireless service. We ask you to please create a master plan of these telecom towers. Please take the time to educate the public and protect the aesthetics of the city and protect the residents and their quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to the council members. I have a couple of items that I'd like to discuss with you tonight. The first one is a concern I have. I am very concerned that we have an auto dealer in the city, Mr. Ziad Alhassan, who operates the Klipinger family of dealerships. I'm concerned that there are no cars on his lot to sell to customers. You know, other cities around us that sell the same name, the same brands, Chevrolet, Ford, Dodge, they are reporting an uptick in sales. It appears that the auto industry is coming back. Well, sadly, we have a dealer that operates in our city that can't get cars. He has no cars. So if somebody wanted to buy a car of one of those brands in the city of West Covina, good luck. They can't do it because he's got, he's got no cars, and the likelihood of him getting cars is slim. So it concerns me that we are facing a, you know, an economic budget crisis, and we have a guy that has prime property in this city selling names that are beginning to sell again, Ford and Chevy. People are buying these cars in other cities, but they can't buy them here. And this is having a very adverse negative effect on our revenue stream. And, you know, I know we've been in ongoing litigation with him for a long time, and I would like to get perhaps a report and update from staff to see where we are at with this, and perhaps a stronger dealer. We are fortunate to have Sage and Norm Reeves and Penske operating in our city, and it would be lovely if one of them that knows how to operate and sell cars could perhaps take these over and get us back in business, because this is killing us. And the law, you know, it's embarrassing. You drive by the freeway, you drive on Azusa Avenue and go by his buildings, and there's no cars. And, you know, people maybe want to buy a car and they can't. So I think that we have to do whatever we need to, to wrap this up and get somebody in there somehow or some way that's going to stock those dealerships and sell cars. We need it, and we need it now. Number one. Number two, on a little, perhaps lighter note, in today's Los Angeles Times, there's a column written by a gentleman named Patrick Goldstein. He writes about entertainment in Hollywood, and he did a column about Ricky Gervais's job hosting the Golden Globes, which was relatively panned. And I read the article, and it was a pretty good article until I got to the last paragraph where he says, "After everything was said and done, all the stars acted like getting a trophy from the foreign press was like winning a Nobel Prize, while Gervais's acted like being paid to host the awards was like taking money to strip at a third-rate gentleman's club in West Covina." Well, I didn't care for that, folks, so I sent the following email to Mr. Goldstein. Dear Mr. Goldstein, I usually enjoy reading your articles on Hollywood. Today's column was no exception until the last paragraph. As a planning commissioner and city council candidate in the city of West Covina, I must take umbrage with your reference to a third-rate gentleman's club in West Covina. For your information, we have no strip clubs in our city at all, not third-rate, not first-rate, none. You may have been thinking of our neighboring city of Industry, which has a plethora of them. In West Covina, we take great pride in the fact that we have no adult businesses within our city limits. We pride ourselves on being the diamond of the East San Gabriel Valley, so when our city is maligned in print, such as it was today in your article, I must write and protest and strongly request you print a retraction and explanation to your readers that West Covina is a strip-free zone. Well, 3 o'clock today, my phone rings. Patrick Goldstein with the Los Angeles Times. Got your email, Mr. Redholtz. May I profusely apologize to you? I am just beside myself. I'm, you know, I made a mistake. I got your email. He says I was trying to wrap up my column. I was looking for something to finish it off that kind of rolled off the tongue, and out popped West Covina, and into my computer, and onto the website, and into the paper. He said, "I went and looked you city up." He said, "You have a fine city. You have a great city." I humbly apologize. I'm going to go on my blog right now, and I'm going to apologize and print a retraction, and it's going to be in the paper also, that I made a mistake. So hey, got to stand up for your city when somebody, you know, puts stuff like this out. It ain't right, and I thanked him for calling me and being a gentleman and admitting when he was wrong. So there you have it, West Covina protected again. Thank you very much, and let's get some car dealers selling cars.
Thank you, Herb. That was great. You know, that's great when somebody takes upon themselves to do that. I don't think any of us saw the article, but that's terrific. So thank you. Appreciate that. Cesar Cervantes? Cesar Cervantes.
Good evening. Mayor Hereford, Mayor Pro Tem Tui, Councilmember Sheri Lane, Sanderson, and Ambrose. Good evening. My name is Cesar Cervantes, and I am a West Covina resident. First of all, I would like to congratulate Councilwoman Ambrose for your appointment. I would also like to congratulate everyone that filled out the application. Particularly, I would like to congratulate some of the applicants that are in a way where I know that I had the opportunity to either work or just enjoy a conversation with them. Mr. Fred Sykes, congratulations for your 30-plus years as a public servant with the Sheriff's Department, for having served in the Planning Commission, and for just staying involved. As far as I'm concerned, you are not a divider. You are an individual with a passion, a passion to continue serving the community that you live in. Keep up the good work, for it has been said that third time is a charm. Commissioner Redholt, congratulations for your continual service to this great city. Today's event is a good proof of that. Your endless effort as a planning commissioner and having served as the commission chair makes you a valuable member of this community. We served together in the Planning Commission, and for the most part, we voted along the same line. On some issues, we have sat on a different side of the aisle, but no one agrees 100% of the time. Commissioner Robert Zatello, a fellow veteran and a person that I had the opportunity to serve again in the Planning Commission. Congratulations for the many years as a commissioner, and particular for having run for city council. We have been together through a few events where we had the opportunity to share some great moments. Commissioner David Stewart, we also served together in the Planning Commission and attended a few seminars and also the California League of Cities event. It has always been a pleasure working and knowing you. You are a great individual. I had the pleasure of meeting your beautiful wife and fellow Realtor with whom we shared some real estate stories. Commissioner Alan Carrico, I have not had the opportunity to work together in any project, nonetheless, the few conversations that we share has always been very professional and with mutual respect. Mr. Lloyd Johnson, you are not only a fellow veteran, but a fellow Marine. Congratulations for your involvement in our community, particularly with veteran issues. You are demonstrating your passion in everything you do. Semper Fi. For everyone else participating in the process, congratulations. I hope that your involvement does not stop now that the nomination process has been determined. Let's don't ask why we were not chosen, for in my opinion, I know that everyone that I have mentioned possesses what it takes to be a great council person. I hope that when you filled out the application, it was because you really believe that you deserve to be sitting in one of those council chairs. I heard people say that the residents of West Covina deserve the right to be able to vote for more than one individual on every city election. I agree. For that reason, today, I propose that in November, not only the residents have the opportunity to vote for two candidates, but also to have plenty of choices, like the choices the city council had when filling the vacancy left by the Honorable Assemblyman Roger Hernandez. Applicants, let's make this next election the best election that this great city has ever experienced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Hello. My name is Beverly Boltis, and I'm the president of West Covina Beautiful. And tonight, I'd like to invite you all to the birthday celebration for West Covina's 88th birthday. It will be on Thursday, February 10th, at the South Hills Country Club, and we are hosting it. A property beautification award will be given to a resident, and then the non-residential award this year will be presented to the Hearst Ranch. Some invitations are out. They're just going out now, so if anybody would like to go and hasn't gotten invitation yet, please see me. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Williams.
Good evening. Buenos noches. Thank you for, I love this part about this wonderful city. I want to tell you, start off by always saying what I always come up here. I'm a registered voter, and I actually vote, so I'm one of the few minorities of this city. And I want to extend my congratulations to you, Karen. And I also want to thank the city council, you know, for the support and for making it a wonderful city and, you know, your experience. One of the key things that I really want to come up here and talk about and try to be myself more, you know, more active in coming to these city council meetings is because, you know, I have a family of five kids, you know, I've got college kids, I'm working, I work 10 to 12 hours a day, and I still haven't had dinner yet, but I wanted to come here to make sure that I had a chance to talk to you because I think it's really important as one of the few thousand actual voters that actually go consistently vote on a regular basis, regardless of whether it's a presidential election or not. I want to emphasize that because we're, you know, working, taking care of my families. You know, I talk about what has happened in the past, and I'm glad we're past that now because I really believe that sometimes it is somebody's key perspective to create a divide and conquer because it creates the limelight on them, and they want to sit there and talk to them, you know, basically create that type of, type of environment. I was raised in a Marine Corps family, Semper Fi. My father, my brother, my grandfather probably served in the United States Marine Corps. And with, if any one of my sons would go, I would tell them to start there. But with that goes into how we were brought up, and that has to do with the dedication, the discipline, and the determination to get past your obstacles and try to find a solution as opposed to trying to find a problem. This divide and conquer that I keep hearing about and keep reading about, all the negativity of the Tribune, they have more print on negatives than they do the positives. They don't talk about the families that are out there working and hustling and trying to make this a better city. I myself am a volunteer in the city of West Covina. I volunteer coaching football. And I want to bring that same frame of teamwork, just like the United States Marines do. It's all about the team. There's no "I." And I talk about that because when I talk about, when I first meet with my parents and we get these 13- and 14-year-old kids, and we're teaching them about team, about being responsible for each other, you know, there's no one person that defines a team. And I can kind of, you know, I guess use that as a, as a, as a direct correlation because, you know, we understand our roles. I work, I vote, I vote for you guys to go out and make decisions that help make my life just a little bit better. And I can honestly sit here and tell you that I know that you have. Or I would be here telling you that you didn't, or I would do the best thing that I would do and not vote for you and have that voice heard, and then there would be new people sitting there. But I want to use this time to basically tell you that in a team, there's not one limelight. And I keep saying that, it's very important, because I've been at the, after working, you know, during the week, Monday through Friday and the weekends and doing what I'm doing, I'm out volunteering, I got my kids in baseball and football. You know, it's really funny. You see people that are actually doing the work. Many hands make short work. And Karen, I want to say thank you because, you know what? I've seen you out there. I've seen you actually out here working, not trying to put a limelight on yourself because you're trying to get the job done. So I want to say thank you for being out there at the park, buying our tacos and carne asada stuff with your family, spending your money, helping us because that's how we're raising money for our kids. But you see, that's the difference, and that's the things that keep, you don't hear about that part of it. You don't hear about that you're part of a team, and you're not trying to sit there and say, you know, "I'm at the front, at the forefront." So I want to make sure that I make light of what our roles are and what we're looking for. I sit back and think about all the times that I look at a winning team, especially with wonderful football, you know, the college games, all the things. You can only succeed if everybody is going in the same direction, not concerned about where you're from and the emphasis of what street corner my house is or whatnot. We are all from the city of West Covina. I am proud to be a resident of West Covina. I'm proud to raise my family in the city of West Covina. And I think it's really important that the emphasis in our newspapers should be that there are a lot of citizens that don't have the time to come down here and to tell you that we are proud, thank you for not putting the spotlight on you, for staying in the part and being part of the working crew. So I want to say thank you very much. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our oral communications. First off, I want to say that, appreciate all the comments. They were respectful. We do disagree on some issues, and that's okay. And I think what we've learned over the last two weeks with the Congresswoman being shot is that we can have differences of opinion, but mental illness was the real cause of that whole episode. But we need to agree that we can disagree, and we can voice our opinions and respect that. So with that, Councilmember Tui.
I also wanted to add on to, Cesar, you spoke about some of the people that served on commissions with you and the stuff they do. I want to make sure that everyone knows there's a lot of other people that serve in many other ways. Coming to the council meeting isn't the only way of serving your community. Beverly and Irene over there, they're West Covina Beautiful friends of the West Covina Library. They put in countless hours that they don't get recognition for, but they do it. So whether they're always at these meetings or not, they're the backbone, putting in volunteer time somewhere else. So sometimes the people seen aren't always the people doing all the, all the work or the heavy lifting. There's a lot of people like Frank Williams, who puts in 10 of hours maintaining fields. Glenn Kennedy donating his time to paint walls. I know it's not, not getting all the credit coming up here, but if you donate 10 or 20 hours of your week doing other things, we have so many friends. You have Jerry Curcio here, who's the president of West Covina National Little League, who, those are countless, countless, and I know you have sons too, so I know everyone has put in their different times, but there's countless of hour, hours people put in, and it may not be what you think they should spend their time on, but it doesn't discount their, how much they care about a community, and they may believe in doing that by putting their time in church and donating to their church. You know, Lloyd, Rob Zatello, Glenn Kennedy, and George Ogden are doing it all on the Veterans Wall, and I know a lot of other people will be involved, but they put in that time, thanklessly. You know, it's just, you know, unfortunately, sometimes in cities, and I'm glad Steve said that, sometimes no good deed goes unpunished. You know, you seem like you try to volunteer and help out, and then you're told you're not volunteering in the right spot, or you're, you were only, you're not at the council meetings. You should volunteer where your heart drives you to volunteer, or where you should, you feel you should donate your time, and it may be something that is, you know, surrounded around your family. And that, to me, is more what you should be judged on, not whether you come here at all, because I'm saying there's no question Herb's been here more than a lot of the people here. You know, there, and some of the things I agree with Herb on, some of the things I disagree with Herb on. Just because a guy doesn't have cars on his car lot, and I hate that, doesn't mean the city should be able to go take his business and put another dealer there. Number one, I believe it's against our redevelopment laws, whether I agree with the gentleman involved at that dealership or not. And obviously, we're in litigation, and we have a multimillion-dollar lawsuit against him. I don't know if we should use our government powers to go in a business and say, "You haven't been stocked at an adequate level," because that may be all you can afford to stock your business at. And we're getting in very dangerous, you know, you're a real estate agent, and when times were worse, I mean, it's not good now still, so I don't know how to say that, but should we say you're not doing enough business and not issue you a license? Or should you have the chance to do as much as you can, and you're doing everything you can? And, you know, I just think a lot of times we have to look around, and it is a different time. You've seen how, when people say one thing or the other, what can happen at a town hall meeting? Everyone encourages us to go there, and anything can be volatile. You never know, and it may not be the person who said it at this podium about us, it may be someone else, how they interpreted it, and what their mindset may be. And we don't know when you come here. I mean, we've had our own issues here before, you know, and some people get so upset. We've had people die in our, you know, in our chambers. I believe you were on the Planning Commission then when that unfortunate incident happened. And I mean, this people get, we got to, you know, sometimes step back and not get so emotionally tied to the stuff, and you're going to win some, you're going to lose some. My daughter is very good friends with Mr. Sandoval's son, and every time I see him, it is devastating to me that I know his father died at our Planning Commission meeting. And I mean, how the family's getting by now, that, that takes a toll on us no matter what. And I wasn't at that meeting, but I feel part of that meeting, and I couldn't imagine what you guys experienced firsthand. So I'm saying, we all got to remember this and also realize that not putting someone else up on a higher pedestal than I've showed up to more meetings, so I'm this. I believe all you give in your own way and do many different things. We don't know the circumstances. Yesterday, I couldn't make it. I phoned Ronnie Jones for the MLK event. Yesterday, I've been sick and under the weather, and I don't know how long I'm going to last here tonight, but I appreciate the people that showed up, and I know you were there, you know? And I appreciate everyone that shows up, and I think we don't know everyone else's circumstances at each individual event, so I think we should just appreciate everybody.
Councilwoman Ambrose.
If I can just say, I appreciate everybody's opinion because we're all entitled to that. That's what our amendment says. But if I can just state that we meet every other month, and the month that we were meeting, my grandmother had passed away, and so three months had gone by before the next meeting that we show up at. So I just wanted to state that for the record.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Is there any item on the consent calendar we'd like to have pulled?
Mr. Mayor, due to my family having a cellphone tower on our property since 1991, since that may affect our cellphone tower, and we don't own the cellphone tower, they rent, I will abstain on item seven. When it comes forward, it's on the consent calendar.
Okay, we'll pull item seven.
We don't need to pull it.
You do not need to pull it.
Okay.
If there's no other council member wishes to discuss this item separately, then it can be part of the motion for approval of the consent, and it will be noted that Mayor Pro Tem Tui has not participated on item number seven.
Okay. Any other items?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
All items. Second by Tui. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we note that one abstention.
We'll note that, actually, not, not participating.
Okay. Next item is a public hearing. This matter set for public hearing, consensus of a request for a general plan amendment from open space to service and neighborhood commercial and a zone change from open space to service commercial for property located at the northeast corner of Azusa Avenue and Giambi Way. City Clerk, will you verify that proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, that's verified.
This time, I shall open the public hearing on general plan amendment number 1001 and zone change number 1001. There will first be the presentation of the staff report, then we shall hear from those in favor of the proposal, then those opposed. Finally, those in favor will have an opportunity to give rebuttal to any testimony received in opposition. Mr. Pazment, who will present the staff report?
Mr. Anderson will do that report.
The applicant for the proposed development, Ahmad Gadiri of Ashton Development, is proposing the construction of a service station. The subject property is located on the northeast corner of Azusa Avenue and Giambi, in Giambi Way adjacent to Big League Dreams. This is, this is the Big League Dreams Park here. This is Azusa Avenue, and this is Giambi Way. And this is where the Home Depot is and the Heights Shopping Center down here. The items before the, or the city council tonight are the general plan amendment, zone change, and zone change to change the land use designation and zoning from open space to commercial. And this, this change would allow for the development of a service station. In addition, before you tonight is the environmental review, which is a mitigated negative declaration, which must be certified to allow for the development. Following the review of this project by Planning Commission, staff did receive a letter from the California Department of Fish and Game raising some issues with the negative declaration. Staff is recommending some minor changes. Those are indicated in the staff report and are also part of the, the resolution for the mitigated negative declaration. Staff is recommending these changes in regards to having a qualified biologist conduct a breeding bird survey and recommending that native vegetation be removed outside the breeding season for birds. The applicant has an exclusive negotiating agreement with the Community Development Commission through May 31, 2011. If the applicant is able to go forward with the project, a disposition and development agreement will be presented to the city council for their review, and that, that is an agreement between the, the between the CDC staff and the developer. Next slide, please. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on August 24, 2010, to consider the proposed service station, which includes a self-service car wash, a convenience store, fast food, and a drive-through. The Planning Commission approved the precise planning condition you submit to allow the service station and recommend approval of the General Plan Amendment, Zone Change, and mitigated negative declaration to the City Council. The vote was five to nothing. That concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer your questions this time.
Council, have any questions? Okay, seeing none. We'll open it up for public discussion. I have a card from Mr. Ahmad Gadiri.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Ahmad Gadiri with A&amp;S Engineering on behalf of Ashton Development, 893 Patriot Drive, Moore Park. We've been working with the staff for the past almost nine months or a year. They've been great to work with us, guide us through this process, and we've reviewed the conditions. We have no problem with complying with the conditions. If I can answer any questions that you might have, I'm available for that.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no other cards, so I will close the public hearing, open it up for our councilmember comments. Any comments? Okay, we'll call for heading to the resolution.
That's Resolution 2011-2, a resolution of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, certifying the negative declaration of the environmental impact for General Plan Amendment number 10-01, Zone Change number 10-01, Precise Plan Number 10, excuse me, 10-02, Conditional Use Permit number 10-02, and Variance Number 10-02 pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act of 1970 as amended. Second Resolution 2011-3, a resolution of the City Council of the City of West Covina, approving General Plan Amendment number 10-01.
Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to adopt.
Blue by Lane. Second by Tui. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, and then the second ordinance, I'll make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Blue by Lane, second by Tui. All those in favor to introduce, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay. That concludes our public hearing. Thank you. We look forward to a nice project out there. Okay, next items are the annual appointments of the City Council. Okay, these are committees that the City Council sits on, both inside the city and outside the city. Some are regional boards with input from the council. I'm proposing the following for the committees, and believe me, these are open for changes if anybody so desires, okay? For the City Schools Liaison Committee, this meets with the school districts. We have Lane as a representative, Armbrust as the alternate. For Foothill Transit, which meets as needed, usually once or twice a year at the most, Sanderson is the representative, Tui is the alternate. For Hearst Ranch at Barn, we have two representatives, this meets once a month. Tui is the representative. Actually, we're both equals on that, so Herford would be the other representative. L.A. Works Board meets the third Thursday at 4:00 p.m. I'm the representative, and Sanderson would be the alternate. L.A. County City Selection Committee, the mayor sits on that, so I'll be the representative. The Rose Folk Foundation, the mayor also sits on that, so I'll be the representative. San Gabriel Valley COG, which meets once a month. Armbrust would be the representative and Sanderson the alternate. San Gabriel Valley Mosquito Abatement District, which meets very early on Friday mornings, and we're so happy that Councilwoman Sanderson does that. And Sanitation Board, which meets once a month, and I would be the representative and Tui the alternate. And SoCal Association of Governments, SCAG, meets just usually once in May. Tui would be the representative, Lane would be the alternate. And we're going to hold off on the West Covina Chamber at this time. There are some reorganization or actually disbanding, we're not sure. Do we have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, those appointments will be as stated starting today. Next item is the Appointment of Community Services Commission.
Mr. Mayor, you also need to make an appointment with the Resolution to the COG. There are two items here.
Do you want to read the resolution?
That's Resolution 2011-4, a resolution of the City Council of the City of West Covina, and I believe you need to name someone to sit on the COG.
Councilwoman Armbrust?
Armbrust, as the governing board representative through the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments.
And Sanderson is the alternate.
And Sanderson is the alternate.
I'll second that.
All those are, do we have a motion first?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Tui.
I'll second.
Second by Lane. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, now we move on to the Appointment of Community Services Commission. We have a vacancy on the Community Services Commission. Councilmember Tui?
Yeah, after reading through all the applications, I'd like to make an appointment of Jerry Curcio to the Community Service Commission.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other nominees? We'll, we have, Councilwoman Armbrust?
I wanted to make a motion to appoint Dietrich Clinton, Jr.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, seeing none. That would fail for lack of a second. Let's go ahead and we'll take the original motion if there's no other motions, and all those in favor of appointing Jerry Curcio, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. There was only one appointment, correct?
Correct.
Did you say two? Who is the retiree?
I think we did that at the last.
Steve Bennett was appointed at the last council meeting.
Yeah, we appointed somebody.
For the first.
Sorry, George. Keep us on watch here. Okay, Councilmember Commission reports, AB 1234 Conference and Meeting Report. Did anybody have anything they need to report? Okay, seeing none. Community Development Commission, any items of concern there? No? Okay, and move on to councilmember comments. We do have some adjournments. Let me just say, you know, it was kind of an exciting Christmas time for the city. We did have the new home decorating program, and we did have West Covina High School, the CIF celebration right after the New Year. So, you know, it was kind of an honor to be the mayor during those times, and, you know, look around the city, and West Covina's in pretty good shape. Our city is run efficiently. We do have our challengers coming up with the budget, but I want to thank the employees for all their hard work in the last year and for the council for their leadership, and look forward to a good 2011. So with that, Councilmember Tui, do you have an adjournment?
Yeah, we have two different adjournments. One, Linda Mayer, our former Public Works Director, Tom Mayer's wife, she passed away. And also for Susan Frank, Greg and Sherry Frank's residents also West Covina, Greg Frank's mother passed away. So we can adjourn in memory of both those individuals and send our condolences to both families.
Okay, and I'd like to also add to that a passing of Maria Delira's mother. Her name is Filipa Chavez. Maria is in our department, is a Department Administrative Assistant of Finance, and it's with great sadness that we announced she passed away yesterday morning. So we'll include her in our adjournment tonight. Councilwoman Lane?
I'd also like to adjourn in memory of Bill Haker. He was a longtime resident, and he died suddenly, and it was quite unexpected, so I'd like to keep his family in our prayers.
Okay, with that somber adjournment, let's all vote in favor to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?